Twenty twenty-three, this is a public meeting of the Select Board. This public meeting of the Select Board should be conducted remotely via Zoom. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note this meeting is being recorded. As a preliminary matter, this is Select Board Vice Chair Chris Gallo. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, please confirm attendance and access when I call your name in the affirmative. I'll start with Selectman Jim Anderson.
Anderson here.
Selectman Bill Harrington.
Harrington here.
Selectwoman Michelle Rouse.
Ross here.
And I'm here, Chris Gallo here. Staff, when I call your name, please also respond in the affirmative. Town manager Kevin Sweet.
Present.
Assistant Town Manager Greg Enos.
Present.
Executive Assistant Amanda Vazapolo.
Present.
It looks like we also have Finance Director Mike King. We have Dr. Cameron from the schools here, and we have Rob Scotten also from our town department. So with the packed agenda getting going, welcome everyone. We're going to hop right to it. I would ask Selectman Harrington, our clerk, to read the announcements.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Announcements for today's meeting. Rentham residents are invited to attend an educational presentation with the Select Board and Attorney Michael Walsh of Walsh &amp; Walsh LLP on May ninth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M at the FIS library in the sweat meeting room. Rentham Senior Senate to host Elder Law Program with the Massachusetts Bar Association on May ninth at twelve thirty. Call five oh eight three eight four five four two five to sign up. Annual water ban, stage two, is now in effect, May first through September thirtieth. This means no nonessential water use between the hours of seven A M and seven P M. Nonessential uses irrigation of lawns and landscaping using sprinklers or automatic irrigation systems. Washing of vehicles except in a commercial car wash or as necessary for the operator's safety. Washing of exterior buildings, surfaces, parking lots, driveways, or sidewalks, except as necessary to apply surface treatments such as paint, preventatives, stucco, pavement, or cement, and filling of swimming pools. These activities may only be completed seven P M to seven A M. Just a reminder, folks, no watering your lawn with automatic sprinklers.
Thank you, Selectman Harrington, for that wonderful job. At this time, we're going to go to Tab, technically Tab Two, Approval of Minutes. At this time, the Vice Chair would entertain a motion to approve the April sixteenth open session meeting minutes. Okay, looks like we had a motion by Selectwoman Rouse and a second by Selectman Harrington. Any further discussion? Being none, we're going to take a roll call vote. Selectman Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Selectman Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Rouse.
Ross, yes.
Chris Gallo, yes, motion carries four zero. Okay, next item on the agenda. Looks like we have an interview, an appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I did receive something that Mrs. Lightbody might be postponed, but it looks like we do have Dan Humphries here as well. Also joining us, it looks like we have Chairman Gasparra. He's here. And yeah, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, welcome to our meeting. How are you tonight?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Gallo, thank you, and Select Board, thank you. We, at our last board meeting, we interviewed Mr. Humphries and were very impressed with his legal background as an attorney. He's very enthusiastic with, on joining the board, wants to be involved as a resident. He would like very much to uphold the nature and character of the community and feels that being a member on the board would be a good way to do this. And we felt he'd be a good team member of the board, understands the zoning bylaws, and the board just with our, through the interview process, just felt he'd be a good member and recommended that to the board that they interview and appoint him as an alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. So if there's any questions that may feel free, and I'll answer the best I can.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Caspera. At this time, I'd like to welcome Mr. Humphries, Dan Humphries, welcome to our meeting. Typically, what we do is we ask you just to give us a, you know, Cliff Notes version of who you are and how long you've been in town and why you're going for this position. And then the board tends to grill you on a lot of, no, we don't. The board asks you a few questions, and it's typically a very friendly process. So we're just happy to get people involved. So welcome, please give us a little introduction about yourself.
Sure, thank you, Board, hopefully you can hear me okay. My name's Dan Humphries. I'm a Rentham resident, been here for over seven years. Live on Elysium Street near Lake Paul. I have a wife who's originally from Rentham, three boys. I've trained as an attorney in Australia for over twenty years, as well as New York qualified here in the United States. I've worked in administrative law for somewhere about twenty years total. And I guess the real reason I want to do this is I just love Rentham. I moved here, I love the community, I think the character of the town is exceptional. I want to preserve and protect that and really just get involved in the town. I, it's a really great community to be part of, and I plan to be here for a long time, so.
That's great, thank you, Dan, appreciate that. I'm going to open it up to the board, starting with Selectman Anderson, see if we have any questions for you. Jimmy, you're muted, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So Dan, first of all, I want to thank you for, you know, volunteering your time to, 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 you know, work with the town. We're always looking for good volunteers. I think you've got an impressive background. I will say this, I do love your Australian accent. I visited Australia probably about thirteen years ago. I was there for a month, loved it, and nice country. So I wish you good luck tonight, and hopefully we'll see you on the Board.
Right, thanks, sir.
Thank you, Selectman Anderson, Selectman Harrington. You're also on mute. No, I think you're still on mute. I'm sure what you said was riveting, but.
All right, so apologize for that. It was very riveting, by the way, but the crowd around me is excited. So just to follow up on Jim's comments, you know, we really appreciate anybody that steps up to volunteer for the town. And with your recommendation from the Chair and Bill Casabara, I'm all for it, and look forward to working with you on the committee.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Selectman Harrington, Selectwoman Rouse.
I can, I got my mute button accurate anyways. Dan, thank you for coming this evening, and thank you for volunteering and stepping up to be a part of the zoning appeals. Great experience, love to hear what you had to say about your interest and why you want to be on this board, especially keeping Rentham the way you've been living in it for the last seven years. So that wonderful to hear, and we appreciate that you're stepping up. So no further questions at this time, thank you.
Great, and thanks, Selectwoman Rouse, and same for me. All the questions have been asked and answered. Thank you so much, Dan. We're going to take, I'm going to make a motion right now, and I, I don't see any reason why it shouldn't pass. So at this time, Vice Chair would entertain a motion to appoint Dan Humphries to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term effective immediately and expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. So I had, I had a motion made by Selectman Anderson, a second by Selectwoman Rouse. Any further discussion? Being none, we'll do a roll call vote. Selectman Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Selectman Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Rouse.
Ross, yes.
Chris Gallo, yes, motion carries four zero. Dan, I ask that you go see the town's clerk's office for your swearing in, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you, Selectboard, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much, Chairman Caspera, good to see you, and I'm sure we'll see you again soon.
Hopefully, yes, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Tab Four, James's Breakfast. One day special, one day license applications. I believe there's multiple, I believe I saw James, I do. James, how you doing today? What can you tell us? What are you guys doing over there at James's Breakfast and more?
Oh, we're trying to keep busy in this economy.
Good.
And we've got a couple of catering jobs coming up. One is my mother-in-law's seventieth birthday party at the restaurant on June eighth. And then, as I've done in the past, let's see, I did our twenty-year reunion, twenty-five, thirty. Now we're at thirty-five-year high school reunion from King Philip. On, what is that? That's in July, the eighteenth, I believe.
So it's twenty-eighth, Sunday, July twenty-eighth on the application?
That's the one, yep.
Great, and obviously, as we have in our packets, you're tip certified. You're the only one serving alcohol, if I'm correct, or other people serving as well?
I'm sure that my wife will be serving as well, which I've been on her to get tip certified. And my mother-in-law will not be serving at her own party, but I think she will be helping out on the anniversary, on the reunion.
Okay, and at this time, I'm going to open it up to the board for any questions, comments, or concerns. We're going to start with Selectman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I don't have any, any really concerns. To me, this is more procedural. James has always done a good job, and so I'm, I'm okay with this.
All right, sounds good. Selectman Harrington.
Yes, Mr. Chair, well said, Selectman Anderson, yeah, I'm, this is procedural. I mean, we've done it numerous other times, I'm good with it.
Great, Selectwoman Rouse.
Same, no further questions at this time, thank you.
Nor do I, James, you're a known entity to us, you do a great job. We have a lot of faith in you and your organization, and yeah, anything we can do to help you out, we always will do so as a board. So at this time, can I do both motions at once, Kevin, or do I have to do them separately? Yeah? Okay, at this time, the Vice Chair would entertain a motion to approve the special one-day license application for James's Breakfast located at eight fifty Franklin Street for both Saturday, June eighth, twenty twenty-four, from six to nine, using the use of electronic signatures, and also for Sunday, July twenty-eighth, from five to eighth, five to eight P M, also using electronic signatures.
So moved.
Second.
So we had a motion made by Selectman Harrington, we had a second by Selectman Anderson. Any further discussion? Being none, we're going to take a roll call vote, Selectman Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Selectman Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Rouse.
Ross, yes.
Gallo, yes, motion carries four zero. Thank you, James.
Thanks, guys.
Good luck.
Okay. As we move right along, looks like the next item on our agenda is an amendment to a common vicular, the Looking Glass Cafe. The Looking Glass Cafe is seeking approval for their outdoor dining. For the last few years, COVID exemption has allowed for the town manager to approve, looking to make this a permanent part of their license for seasonal use. We have Mr. Said Samir with us, do we have Said Samir with us? No? Okay, I'm looking through, can we move forward without him being here, Kevin? Just looking through the application and stuff?
Yeah, you certainly can. I, I thought he was joining us, but he has submitted the materials. This is more of a procedural approval, as you indicated, for the common vicular. Needs to depict if they're going to have outdoor seating. And, you know, he's done that, he's done a pretty thorough diagram with dimensions, showing the locations of the proposed tables, total of four tables with the seating and the layout. And, and I think it's pretty straightforward from my perspective. I think there's, you know, from as far as patrons, there certainly is a lot of interest with the outdoor seating at that establishment. It gets a lot of use, and I would like to recommend that it be approved. I think it's a good addition to the downtown. So I can answer any, any questions that you may have on it. As you noted, I did, under my special delegation for approval during the COVID period, I did allow that. So this is just a matter of just kind of getting everybody back procedurally to make sure everybody's in good standing order, which he has done to make that request a permanent addition.
Okay, I mean, I myself have no issues with this. Anything we can do to help our small businesses in town? This board is always a strong supporter of all business, especially small business. So I'm just going to open it up to the board to see if anyone has any questions or concerns, starting with Selectman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I actually concur with, with your sentiments. Anything we can do to help small businesses, I'm all for. They've had outdoor seating in the past. I don't see any issues with it, so I would be a yes.
Okay, Selectman Harrington.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I totally agree. Anything we can do to help small business move forward and have additional seating is great. I do want to give a big shout out to Maradee. She is the, one of the waitresses there, and she did the artwork for us to enjoy this evening for the design of the tables. So I thought she should be commended for her display.
Excellent, excellent job. Selectwoman Rouse.
No further questions at this time, happy that we're able to support our small businesses.
Okay, so at this time, the Vice Chair would entertain a motion to approve the Common Victular license application for the Looking Glass Cafe located at fifty-six South Street as presented and to use, and to authorize the use of electronic signatures.
So moved.
Say, so we had a motion made by Selectman Harrington, we had a second by Selectman Anderson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, take a roll call vote, Selectman Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Okay, Selectman Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Rouse.
Ross, yes.
Gallo, yes, motion carries four zero. Good job, Sam. Of course, I'm sure that'll be communicated to him, Kevin, right?
Yes, we will follow up with him in the morning, let him know of the approval. I know he was anxious to get this approved, so thank you.
Okay, at this time, it looks like we're welcoming a school superintendent, Dr. Alan Cameron, to our meeting regarding some capital requests. Dr. Cameron, it's always good to see you. Welcome to our meeting this evening, and it's great to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it's great to be here. And just if I may, through you, I want to thank you and the other members of the Select Board for the very thoughtful teacher appreciation email that was sent to me today that I forwarded to the staff. It's really wonderful that you all remembered, all of us over at WPS, and, you know, had the consideration to send that thoughtful note. I know it means a lot, it's one of the reasons why Rentham is a great place. So thank you very much for thinking of us.
You're welcome, and please, as you know, this board is a big, a big supporter of our school system, of you and your team, of our staff, all the employees, the, you know, everyone, you know, from top to bottom. We think they do a fantastic job for our kids. You know, so it's, 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 please make sure that you do let them know that, and it's our pleasure to do that. And I want to give a special thank you to Amanda Vazapolo and Michelle, Select, sorry, Selectwoman Rouse, for organizing that, so thank you to you guys. So Dr. Cameron, what are we doing today?
Yeah, yes, sir. So I'm here tonight to talk about three proposals for capital items that we are, that I am hoping that you will support when we go to town meeting. All three are important for what we do in the district, and they align with our strategic objectives and are items that cost more money than we can put into the operating budget. So we're hoping to work with the town to get them. And I have to say that Kevin Sweet and Mike King have been great partners in getting to this point. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk about all three. So the first one is a replacement for a nineteen ninety-seven air conditioning system that we have in the Delaney main office. We've been working very hard over the years to keep that running, but it's really reached the end of its, of its effective life, and it's also very inefficient. So we're spending a lot of money fixing it and paying to keep it operating, and we're hoping that we can replace with something that will be more efficient, more cost-effective, and more reliable. The second one is an installation of security film. So this is a twenty-three mil late, or I don't know what the material is, but it's a film they place on windows and doors near entrances that make it much more difficult for someone looking to come in and cause harm to gain access to the building. Now, we got this idea, we watched the videos last year from that tragic school shooting in Nashville, where the doors were locked and the intruder shot his way into the building. You know, all schools have lots of glass doors, unfortunately, and it is a weakness. So installing the security film would make it much, much more difficult for an intruder to access the building. In fact, if this was in place, the police would most likely be on site before the person was even able to access the building. And then the last one is a English Language Arts Core program. You know, obviously, we, what we do is we teach children how to read. It's one of the most important things that we do. And every, we've been using a variety of resources to help the students learn over the years. We've had a core program called Units of Study, which has been the, the basic program that we've used, and it was the gold standard for a long time. But we realized in Rentham is that there are many gaps in the program, particularly around helping kids learn how to sound words out, phonics, and decoding words. And we've had to supplement with different resources to make sure the students have the skills they needed to, to advance learning to read. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has come out and said that they want all districts to move away from that more eclectic approach, where you use a variety of resources to using a program that has scientifically proven reading strategies. And we were already in the midst of a review process when Desi came out and made that recommendation. And so we would like to purchase a program that is aligned with the state's expectations for reading instruction and is, we know, has all of the aspect, all the tools that we need to give the teachers so they could help our teach, our students learn how to read. All three are, as I mentioned, they, I know they are expensive, but they're all important. And I'm here tonight to ask for your support for all three. Happy to answer any question you have.
Thank you, Dr. Cameron, before we get into that, Kevin, did I, did we get some information regarding costs of each of these? And where might it come from?
Yes, Mr. Chair, absolutely. I had hoped to get into that, the specific costs and the recommended funding sources at an upcoming agenda item with regards to the one-time revenue utilization recommendations. What I've asked was Dr. Cameron could come and speak on behalf of the schools and speak on their requests. As, as Dr. Cameron said, this isn't anything new to myself, or Mike, we've had these discussions over, well, well over twelve months now. I have had an opportunity to meet not only with Dr. Cameron, but with two of the school committee members over that last year, and, you know, really have recognized the request and the high priority need for the film, in addition to the curriculum. And, and these are the three top high priorities for the, for the Rentham Elementary School that Dr. Cameron has illustrated. We'll go through the specifics, but I just wanted to have you folks be able to hear that directly from Dr. Cameron, who certainly could speak better than I. I would butcher any discussion on the English curriculum. But yeah, no, I, we will go into the details of that, the specific costs and the, the funding recommendations. What's presented to you later on is a pretty extensive recommendation before town meeting, and actually kind of an exciting opportunity to be able to address a number of outstanding, long-time capital needs that have been deferred. And, and this is a good year for us, so I will talk more about that unless you want to go directly into specifics. But it was more about the rationale behind the request. And I was hoping that Dr. Cameron could illustrate, as I said, better than I. And yeah, that was, that was the real reason to request that he, he joined tonight.
That's fine, I think we can follow that agenda that you laid out. I would open it up at this time to the rest of the board to see if anyone has any questions or comments for Dr. Cameron. I'm going to start with Selectman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So, so Dr. Cameron, good to see you, my friend.
Yes, sir, good to see you.
As always, you know, you do a great job with the school, I'm happy that we have you. And I'm, as you know, you've got my, you know, undying support for anything you ask for, so.
Appreciate that, thank you, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, Selectman Anderson, Selectman Harrington.
Yes, Mr. Chair, but so I, yeah, Dr. Cameron, you know, I couldn't be more supportive of the school system. I don't think it's generally possible. Guys do a great job to keep the teachers safe and students safe as priority. When they taught me how to read, they used a Rockin tablet, so I think anything they've advanced along since then would be a great improvement. And it's certainly important to have a comfortable environment for the office staff, and it'd be much more efficient to have a new system in there, in my opinion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Selectman Harrington, Selectwoman Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, good to see you, Dr. Cameron. I echo everyone else's comments. And I know that anything that you would bring forward to us, you have diligently thought through and have considered what is best for the, the children and your team. I do have one question on the security film. Do they, do they offer any grants for something like that, or?
They do. We applied for a big one last year, and we did not get it, unfortunately. And they are, I, I've heard going to offer another one coming up again soon, same grant. So if, if I'm able to, I think that grant, we wouldn't be awarded that grant until probably the middle of next year, so I don't know how that would work with the finances. But we've certainly pursued grant funding for it. We just weren't successful.
And then.
Do you mind if I, if I could just add to that? Yeah, I think, specific to that, unfortunately, we didn't receive that grant. We, we were also participated in the support of that. I think it was just over half a million dollars. What this request is, was to kind of come back and revisit the larger request and say, you know, obviously, if, if there's no grant funding, what do we see as the priority to be able to fund? And that was the film piece of it. The grant actually expanded significantly more than just the filming to improve security enhancements. We also, which Dr. Cameron can elaborate on as well, this, this was, these decisions weren't made in a, in a box. The Rentham Police Department was consulted, they came out, looked at it. I know, I know Sergeant Morrison and the chief and others have been involved with the review of this to look at it. And, and really, what I think the biggest takeaway is, you know, worst case is, is that we're, we're fortunate that the location of our police department is significantly very close. And really, you know, the effects of the potential for this could be really just that saving of delay of time, which is significant, that's been proven by many of these after-action things. So I think if, I think we probably, and I won't speak about Cameron, but we probably would look to try and make it even more of a comprehensive request again. And if we were to get some portion of, or even just the film, what would happen is that, that we would spend that first, obviously, timing-wise, if, if, if able. So just sorry about that, I just wanted to just add in that, that piece.
No, that's very helpful information for everyone to understand and to hear. And then, Dr. Cameron, just one other question, the English Language Arts Core Curriculum, K through six, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I, if I, may, Mr. Chair, may I just build on what Mr. Sweet was saying briefly? I just would like, I think that's an important point to mention, that Chief McGrath and Sergeant Morris and Officer Schwalbe have been great partners in all of the, the school safety work. And that's a really important point to make about how this wasn't done, this isn't, you know, I'm not a security expert, but certainly they are, and the comprehensive grant had many other aspects. And they determined this was probably the priority of all of those things, but I owe a debt to them. And then I also, as Mr. Sweet had mentioned, I really should also publicly thank, on the school committee, Mr. Jordan and Mr. Lashway, those two were really pivotal in advancing the security film initiative. And they met with Mr. Sweet to talk about that and advocate for us in the school, so I appreciate their hard work.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you for that information. We do, we're fortunate to have. Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you for that information. We do, we're fortunate to have a good group of people. Um, we have a fantastic police department. I don't like to say that too loud because Chief McGrath has a big ego, but uh, we, we're very fortunate to have him, uh, and I do love him. Uh, so anyway, uh, with that being said, uh, seeing no further questions or comments from this group, um, Kevin, can we move on to the, uh, to the next item, vote to appropriate school book fund transfer? Or do you want to go to?
Yeah, no, Mr. Chair, I'm good to jump onto that agenda item if um, if, if you're good.
I'm fantastic. Dr. Cameron, feel free to uh, hang out for a minute here. So
Yes, sir.
At this time, we're going to go to um, the next item on our agenda, uh, as we make our way towards the one-time revenue utilization recommendations, but uh, this next item looks like a vote to approve appropriate uh, school book fund trust. Um, who's going to be able to speak to that for us?
Well, I can, I could speak to that. And if there's anything in further detail, uh, Finance Director Mike King is on as well. Um, this actually was a part of, has stemmed from the excellent due diligence, I think. Um, who does a great job as our finance director and has really uh, really made a lot of improvements down there. Um, through his research, he was able to identify um, this essentially this uh, they was referred to as a school book fund trust. Uh, that looks like it was established in eighteen ninety-four. The last reporting of this was in nineteen ninety-five. So the initial funding in eighteen ninety-four um, was essentially, was it, was funded to offer a book for purchase for an indigent student. Um, and it looks like at that time it was about one thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars. Um, and there was really no, no real, there's not obviously going back in how much we could, we could find. There's not a ton of information um, regarding this, but this trust and this fund um, still exists on the books. And we have, Mike has done his due diligence. We have also um, proposed this to Town Council. Town Council reviewed the language of the um, existing trusts, had reviewed uh, what we hope to do with it, uh, which is to utilize and help support the curriculum to offset the actual total costs. Uh, the total cost of the English language curriculum is four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, a hundred and thirty-five thousand from the school book fund, um, that we were just discussing uh, with a ninety-five thousand dollar state grant, or ninety-five thousand dollar state grant match of some leaves uh, two thousand that we're recommending uh, be free, uh, be funded from free cash. But for the purpose of this agenda item, um, again, Town Council has reviewed this, um, this, the original intent of this, um, certainly it's in line with book purchases. Um, she has done her review and it does not bind uh, any future gifts to a particular category. Um, and the fact of how the original structure was set up, um, certainly is allowable and in the intent. Um, Mike, I don't know if you want to add anything more to that. I think I've kind of summed up sort of this, up until the last couple of uh, months, uh, before Mike brought this to my attention and um, knowing that this big cost was coming our way, we were looking at options to potentially um, spread it out over two fiscal year payments, um, which I know we, we did receive uh, the quotes to be able to do that. And um, we, we'd like to just go ahead and fund it all in uh, FY twenty-five as I laid out. Uh, this helped alleviate that hundred and thirty-five thousand is somewhat, um, you know, so unfound or found money, if you will, um, undesignated money. Um, so that was a, that was a nice uh, a nice addition to be able to accomplish this uh, this high priority for the school system.
Thank you. Mike King, great job. Um, great job to all the team members here that made this happen. At this time, I'm going to open it up to the members of the board to see if anyone has any questions or comments, starting with Jim Anderson. Selectman Anderson.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I've got no uh, no concerns, no comments.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Selectman Harrington.
Um, Mr. Chair, yeah, no uh, no comments. Great work. Uh, great work. No, no, nothing to add.
Thank you. Selectwoman Ross.
No additional questions, um, and just one comment to say, nice job, Mike.
Yeah, I agree. Great job, Mike. And whoever else helped you do that, I know there's a team.
Absolutely.
Yeah, great job. Okay. At this time, Vice Chair would obtain a motion to move that a hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents plus any accumulated interest from the school book fund trust account shall be applied to pay for costs of an English language curriculum update for the Rhythm Public Schools.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Selectman Anderson, second by Selectman Harrington. Any further discussion? Be none, take a roll call vote. Selectman Anderson.
Yeah, Anderson, yes.
Selectman Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Ross.
Ross, yes.
Chris Gallo, yes. Motion carries four zero. Okay. This time, we're going to talk about this uh, one-time revenue utilization recommendation. I'm going to turn it over to Town Manager Kevin Sweet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If it's um, if it's okay with you, I'd like to just go through the memo. Um, we can come back and talk about any specifics within the recommendation, but it's uh, obviously, it's pretty detailed. The board does have uh, have this memo dated today, May seventh, uh, dear Honorable Select Board. As you are aware, the free cash certified by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three has an available balance of five million, five hundred and ninety thousand, thirty-four. Water Enterprise retained earnings were also certified by the Department of Revenue with the current available balance of three million, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventeen. Our general fund stabilization is two million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven. And capital stabilization balance is a million, eighty-four ninety-eight. These important indicators of the town's fiscal health are part of the overall financial diagnosis. Uh, these uh, these fund balances, I think, really show a, a paint the uh, the town of Rhythm financially stable and a good position. And as we go through a couple of these reasons or rationales why we want to continue to fund for sort of the rainy day savings account is, as you know, the town uh, is going to be facing future borrowing. Anything that we can do to uh, enhance our bond rating and um, paint, you know, paint ourselves in a, in a better, uh, better picture uh, when it comes to that, to that, that point. So we're uh, some of these initiatives are geared towards that. As I said, um, in prior meetings and in the past, uh, with the leaving of Chad Lovett, our Director of Facilities and Capital Planning in that former position, I kind of uh, reevaluated things and switched gears. I designated Mike King to really serve as our uh, capital planning manager. Uh, Mike's background, obviously, in finance, but has also uh, has taken classes and certifications in capital improvement planning. Uh, he managed it for the town of Rainham prior to joining us. And um, you know, was the, was the right guy for this. Um, on the planning side, the funding source, um, obviously, the finance director is heavily involved. Uh, once projects are kind of proposed and identified, um, you know, to where the funding source is going to be coming from anyway. Um, so Mike's done a great job jumping right in. I thank him for that. Um, with that, he leads to the chairs, the Town Managers' Capital Planning Advisory Committee. Uh, Mike has spent diligent hours uh, meeting with department heads, having uh, requests for detailed requests um, to develop and improve on the five-year capital improvement plan, which will be a lot more digested and presented in the fall. Um, a number of these items that we'll go through uh, have been annual needs and requests for years. Um, like anything, and there's several items that didn't get funded, even for a, or recommended get funded for this year. And they get deferred. We have to prioritize based on the department's priority, the overall town's priority, and obviously um, the restraints that we have with funding sources and available, um, available funds. So a breakdown as we look at it from um, the free cash as a source of funding. I'm recommending the following. A couple of these things are sort of, I, I look at as non-discretionary first. Those are committed uh, ongoing lease payments, anything that we have ongoing committed costs. Um, obviously, the snow and ice deficit and dealing with those things that are really non-discretionary, they need to come off the table first before we really look at prioritizing um, the capital, uh, the capital projects that are recommended as well. The FY twenty twenty-four snow and ice deficit, um, as of May third. So as of May third is two hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four. That brings in the, the last of any outstanding invoices that uh, may have been out there that are, that were due either to contractors, materials, supplies. And that is the final uh, FY twenty-four snow and ice deficit, two hundred and forty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four, uh, being recommended from free cash. FY twenty twenty-five general fund operating budget. Um, as you know, the board uh, unanimously approved the FY twenty-five budget at our prior meeting. Um, that budget included the utilization or use of one point three million uh, in free cash, which is a four hundred thousand dollar reduction over the last two years and two hundred thousand from the FY twenty-four uh, utilization. So heading in the right direction, um, and all good things, but um, those funds need to come out of free cash. General stabilization recommendation of five hundred and ten thousand. Transfers of funds into the general stabilization, stabilization funds help the town maintain its strong double A plus bond rating and provides a rainy day fund. With the recommended addition of five hundred and ten thousand, we'll be at five percent of the proposed FY twenty twenty-five operating budget. The Massachusetts Municipal Association recommends a minimum balance of five percent of operating expenditure budget for the general stabilization fund. As I said, this will be uh, looked at favorable and we, you know, we ideally would try to keep at that five percent mark. We did, we, we were able to in um, FY twenty-four also make a contribution um, to the stabilization account that brought us at about four, four and a half percent. This gets us now um, to a place where it's really uh, sound municipal finance practices. And um, you know, I strongly recommend doing that. Um, again, often the general stabilization is really more referred to as you're somewhat of a rainy, uh, rainy day fund. Uh, but it is absolutely looked at very favorable uh, during the bonding process and reviews. Capital stabilization recommending one point five million uh, to be transferred from free cash, transfer of funds into the capital stabilization funds at a plan for significant capital purchases that will occur in the future. Rather than waiting and appropriating or borrowing the entire sum in one year, this fund allows the town to reserve with town meeting approval incremental sums of money over time. When a project or purchase is ready to be funded, a town meeting vote will be required to appropriate the funds as with all of our stabilization uh, accounts, the two-thirds vote by the legislative body or town meeting. Um, this is also an exciting um, item. Another one of those saving uh, in, in really just sound fiscal and proper planning. Um, as you know, I've been kind of driving this home. We had a very successful sale with the Mara property. Um, the closure of that property was uh, has all been planned by this board, by my administration to kind of get to where we are today. We've taken some of that initial allocation to fund the design um, of the DPW facility. We've also taken a portion of that to fund the uh, the survey, the evaluation work that's going to be done for the Roderick Elementary School, which we hope to get that MSBA reimbursement portion back. Um, but all good things. From my time and even before my time, the capital stabilization fund was um, unofficially earmarked really to work towards um, at the time, which and still continues to be the town's biggest infrastructure need related to building uh, purposes, and that's a DPW facility. So the more we can save, the less we uh, we need to borrow and ultimately, um, the less that we need to ask our, our taxpayers, um, the burden to cover. So um, that's a, that's a great item, that one point five million. Um, as I said, with that addition, that would bring us uh, our general stabilization to two point one million, just over two point one million in our capital stabilization now. Um, as, as over a million, so that would bring us to just about almost two point six million uh, in capital stabilization savings, which is, which is a great, um, great thing to toe. Um, OPEB Trust from Free Cash recommendation of forty thousand. Uh, a hundred thousand total to fund the OPEB Trust, which was established in FY twenty, twenty thirteen. We've been committed to funding this annually as a wise approach to abate future costs. Our current OPEB Trust balance is nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and nineteen. Um, with the forty thousand from the free cash and sixty thousand from retained earnings, that would bring our OPEB uh, trust to over a million dollar balance. Um, in a fairly short period, we've, we have been consistently, um, not necessarily aggressively, um, but as, as a sound financial plan to continue to fund annually our OPEB Trust. This same recommendation in FY twenty-five is the same amount that we've contributed in the, in the last recent fiscal years as well, um, and recommend that we continue to do so. Prior year bills, we did have a, do it, some change in the office manager was um, unveiled or uncovered a FY twenty-three DPW uh, training invoice from UMass Transportation Center that were received by the town in February of this year, in February of twenty-four. Bill that was missed, that's six hundred dollars, um, in a prior year bill that uh, we need to address. Tree mitigation funds uh, for fifteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine. Tree mitigation funds were received by the planning board in FY twenty-three by an applicant to mitigate tree reduction. At the time of receipt, these monies were general fund revenue and closed out to free cash. Town meeting need, now needs to appropriate these funds so that they can be utilized by the town's tree warden for off-site planting. Just uh, if I were to kind of present an analogy, this is similar to prior to the recent change in the opioid um, settlement funds. As you know, those funds came in, um, the town isn't able to, weren't, wasn't at that time able to access those funds. They would basically come in, close out as free cash. Um, so we needed to go back to the legislative body and request that they be appropriated so that we could access those funds for what the, what the purpose of. These funds were taken in specifically for that purpose. And um, this, this is the only mechanism to be able to appropriate them so that the tree warden can uh, move forward with the off-site plantings. Um, just a caveat to that, new legislation has since been passed this fiscal year that allows mitigation funds to be credited to a special revenue account, allowing them to be spent without appropriation. So exactly similar to what we just recently saw with the opioid settlement funds, which we now can appropriate without going to a town meeting, having to do a town meeting article. Um, this will be similar moving forward, but this was fun, this was uh, revenues from the FY twenty-three. So moving forward, this will be a non-issue, but the fifteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine from free cash will, will address this for uh, for that purpose. FY twenty twenty-five capital planning general fund priorities, uh, one million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-three for the facilities department. Uh, this is an item that's been on the books for a few years now for the fire department. Um, kitchen cabinets and appliances, uh, total of fifty-five thousand. Um, that building now is turned twenty years old. Uh, the kitchen, um, quite frank, the kitchen itself, um, was poor quality material. It really uh, the materials that are in there at best are, you know, Home Depot style, um, Formica countertop, very um, flimsy doors. Facilities maintenance has on a number, uh, number of work orders has made repairs to doors, um, you know, with doors coming off hinges, just continuous to be just stripped out, um, the dishwasher and a couple of those things. So this has been something that the chief had requested a few years ago. Um, we weren't ready to make any recommendation last year. And um, they, they have since made few, multiple repairs over the last fiscal year. And we're at a point now where it's just beyond its useful life, um, and, and that does need to be replaced. As you, as you know, the, they operate four, four groups in there. The guys do uh, men and women do the best job they can with maintaining and, and, you know, living, maintaining where they live. Uh, ultimately, but um, at some point, just uh, these things don't last forever. So that's recommended, um, full replacement for fifty-five thousand. Public safety, fire engine two replacement is the, one of those non-discretionary items. This is the lease payment, six of seven uh, for eighty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-three. That, that is for the engine two, um, lease payment. Department of Public Works Ford F three fifty dump truck for seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty. Ford F five fifty dump truck, eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty. Stormwater asset management planning grant for fifty thousand. And supplemental chapter ninety funds for road and sidewalk improvements at five hundred thousand and red dam repairs at a hundred and sixty-five thousand. All of those combined, um, bring, make, within the public works and are part of that one, one point four million. A little bit more specific about the red dam. Um, the, the town is under a uh, essentially a consent for um, certificate of non-compliance and dam safety order, which was issued uh, last March by the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation Office of Dam Safety. The red dam itself is um, deemed, I think it's a class two. Yeah, it's currently classified as a large class, large-sized, significant class-two hazard potential dam. Um, the town needs to move forward with engineering and design. We need to show a good faith effort that we're working to address um, the non-compliance and the order that we received. Um, and that there's no definitive timeline on when repairs need to be made per se. Um, we're projecting for repairs are probably going to hit in FY twenty-six. With that, we have submitted a um, for a grant that would actually cover, let me just pull up um, the specifics on that. So the repairs uh, currently, there is no deadline in place for a hundred percent completion of repairs. A hundred and sixty-five thousand covers the cost of engineering design and permitting for the project. This amount could be reduced if the town receives state grant, actual repair. Actual repairs would not be scheduled to begin until F Y twenty six. Those particular the, the funds that we have submitted, which was submitted on April first. Requests for again, a hundred and sixty five thousand total project cost, which is before you. Which would be a state fund of funding of a hundred and twenty three thousand, seven hundred and fifty. So if, if we were, if we are fortunate enough to get that grant, which requires a twenty five percent local match out of that a hundred and sixty five thousand, the town would be responsible for forty one thousand, two hundred and fifty. The good news is they're obviously, you know, that's, that's what we're hoping for. We won't know that until after town meeting. And into the summertime, probably, I think it was in July. So we do need to move forward with the assumption that one hundred percent of it will be borne by the town. Ideally, that's not the case. Anything that would be left over because of the way this is written, we could then you know, it would either close out, but I would actually recommend that it would stay and be part of the funding and reduce the amount of funding we're ultimately going to need to do the actual repairs. Those repairs, early review of it is anywhere from six hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars. Would be the estimate. So there's obviously this design and planning work will really kind of fine tune that, but that's sort of preliminary estimates. So it's, it's not cheap. It's a major dam for the, for the town. The town owns it and it's really significant for, for Lake Pearl. And the operation of Lake Pearl. So that's that item. So make this, make sure jumping back here. The chapter ninety funds, last year I was able, I think it was really the first year of that we've ever contributed local funds to roads and sidewalks last year. You know, we ideally at a minimum, if we could try to match the chapter ninety funding, which we were able to do last year. Chapter ninety is roughly about four hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty five thousand on an annual basis, recommending five hundred thousand between this and some carryover chapter ninety money. And some, you know, some, some of those funds will be able to, this year, we're planning for some pretty significant projects that, as you know, like anything, costs have gone up and skyrocketed at a number of things. So every linear foot of granite curbing, cubic yards of asphalt, just it's extremely costly. So we need to have enough funds built up before we can even make any impact to be able to utilize that. And, and that's through competitive grant through Searstie as part of our regional procurement group that, that those contractors are procured for. So best pricing we can get, but it is costly. Recreation Department, the Rice Complex Parking Lot Resailing Crack Repair and Line Painting. This is, this has been something that has been on the plan for at least five years. If you've been out there, it's, it's a lot, it's, it's a large parking lot. There's a lot of asphalt. There is no more parking spaces delineated. All of the road paint is essentially, it's essentially gone. There's no delineation. They're using a lot of cones for road directory. This proposal of seventy five thousand accomplishes the full resailing, crack repair and line painting. I think it's about four hundred and ten spaces, about thirty directional arrows, yellow hashways, ten, ten handicap spaces. So full sort of soup to nuts. Gets it to a place where ultimately, you know, we, we should have been doing over the last several years and, and anytime we can do crack sealing and you know, crack repair and, and those things ultimately will preserve the for a longer future. So it is needed. It has been something that has been deferred for a number of years. And to be frank, I was actually quite pleased to see the, at least the preliminary estimates that came in. We were expecting it was going to be more above six. Early submittals. So you know, working with at least the one quote we did receive, it's, it's looking pretty favorable. So we think we'll be able to handle all that, get it accomplished with the seventy five thousand in funding. Rent from public schools, the English language curriculum, as I said, was the total of four hundred and thirty thousand through the offs, those offsets recommending that free cash cover two hundred thousand of that. That would then allow for the full curriculum update for the English language. The installation of the security film at a hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and sixty. And the replacement of Delaney Main Office A C system at sixty thousand. This is all three of those, as I said, were school committee and administration high priorities. I know you know, specifically on the Delaney office, I think last year they had to send staff home. And it's just been a continuous, we're ending up spending it or the schools ending up spending those costs related to HVAC and maintenance repairs that are really just starting to add up and truly just becoming unreliable. Those staff are in there all summer and you know, it's utilized throughout the, throughout the cooling months. Total of these proposed free cash expenditures, expenditures would be just over five million, leaving a balance of four hundred and four thousand, two hundred and fifty eight to be left unappropriated and migrate to next year's free cash certification. Jumping over to the following from the retained earnings. O P E B trust, which would be the other sixty thousand of the hundred thousand that's being recommended to fund from the water retained earnings. Again, that would get us to about a million sixty eight if we were to move forward with that. F Y twenty five Water Enterprise Fund Budget seventy five thousand. That's balanced by allocating, the budget itself is balanced by allocating seventy five thousand from retained earnings towards operating capital. The equivalent to F Y twenty four. This has been a continuous budget item that we do to be able to fund some the ongoing capital needs that arise, obviously, you know, running and maintaining a a water system gets expensive and costly and unpredictable. So this is to be able to help be able to deal with those sort of day-to-day capital things that, that do come up. F Y twenty five Capital Planning Water Retain Earning Uses a hundred and five thousand. Department of Public Works for BACO, a hundred and five thousand. F Y twenty five Water System Improvements from Water Retain Earnings Uses of nine hundred and thirty one thousand, five hundred. This is for a number of projects that are just been identified that have been somewhat emergencies delayed, emergencies that have been Band-Aid patched. And things that, you know, both myself, working with Brian and his team have known about for months and we just don't have the fun, hadn't had the funds to be able to address them. And have been on our plan to be able to do. That's the Arnold Street Water Main Replacement, three hundred and forty thousand. Denim Street Railroad Bridge Water Main Replacement, two hundred and fifty thousand. Lead Service Line Replacement Survey, eighty two thousand, five hundred. Lloyd Ave Water Main Replacement and Ames Ave Tie-in, a hundred and ninety thousand. And Unidirectional Flushing Program for sixty nine thousand. Some of these are requirements of Mass D P and requirements that we, we have to do. Just to add to that, much like many of these things, we have submitted funding requests from State Airmarks, both to Senator Roche and to State Representative Vaughn requesting for priorities for the towns, a lot of which mayor of these, you know, we've always have asked for anywhere from about eight to twelve requests that we've recognized annually as high priorities. What I will say, they generally don't fund anything really more, their, their sweet spot is about fifty thousand if we're fortunate enough to get an airmark. So somewhere really between thirty and fifty. We have put a couple of these items as priority requests. And obviously, if we do get an airmark, if we're fortunate enough to get anything like that, we would, we would just not spend the article funds. But we have to plan as if that money isn't going to be there. The total of these proposed water retain earnings expenditure would be one million, one hundred and seventy one thousand, five hundred, leaving a balance of two million, five hundred and eighty eight thousand, three hundred and seventeen to be left unappropriated and migrate to next year's retained earnings certification. That's a great number to be at, you know, even being able to address all of those water priorities and be able to still close out with just over two point five million in retained earnings to, to carry forward for future years is a good place to be. Recommending the following appropriations from ambulance receipts, the F Y twenty five General Fund Operating Budget, which you're aware of at a million forty. This is the same amount that was utilized. There was no increase to this over F Y twenty four. The operating budget is balanced by the use of one million forty thousand out of the town's ambulance receipts. Account offset for Fire Department E M S related expenditures, which as I said, is the equivalent of F Y twenty four. F Y twenty five Capital Planning Ambulance Receipts uses of fifty seven thousand, two hundred and fifty eight for a fire A L S ambulance repayment, replacement. This is lease payment five of five. This is the last year of that ambulance lease payment at fifty seven thousand, two hundred and fifty eight. With the caveat that we are going to have another one coming and we've been trying to regularly and have done a great job with the staffing that we may, we have and be able to get two ambulances out out on the road as much as possible, which has really, really helped our ambulance billing and ambulance receipts overall. But this will be the last payment for the, for that A L S unit. Recommending the following appropriations from the overlay surplus. It did request that the Board of Assessors review the overlay and request them to do an analysis of the overlay and to release any overlay surplus that they have. They have done that. They notified me of the release of eight hundred thousand. And we're recommending from the F Y twenty five Capital Plan Overlay Surplus Uses of seven hundred and forty eight thousand of that for public safety, fire to replace the nineteen ninety white GMC tanker truck at five hundred and ten thousand. And to replace the nineteen ninety four F three fifty brush truck squad two at two hundred and thirty eight thousand. These numbers have been back and forth with a few different vendors, the chief looking at you know, what's really needed for operations and they've come down from what some of the original numbers were. But these costs are, are just exorbitant. I mentioned that engine two, that engine two. If we would have replaced that exact same engine two today, it'll be over half a million dollars more than what we paid, which was around, like thing was around six hundred or so. Was over a million for the exact same layout and exact same design. So these things are just getting astronomical. You know, obviously, these vehicles owe us nothing. Nineteen ninety and a nineteen ninety four, you know, these, these are standard trucks to get used a lot. They're, they're both part of the available units. They're part, none of them are out of service, but they are tired. They are falling apart. We're spending at this point annually significant amount in repairs and maintenance costs that just it's penny wise, palm foolish. Fortunately, with that overlay release, we're able to address some of these items, these particular two items, which have been on the capital plan for a few years now as far as identified for and deferred for future replacement. Due to a variety of factors, other identified requests have been put on hold. The current capital improvement plan slated to be presented and discussed in fall of twenty twenty four identifies millions in general fund capital projects. I would anticipate a comprehensive presentation and discussion prior to Fall Town Meeting about our C I P, building projects and priorities, pavement management and water capital needs. And as I said, Mike will continue this, this capital planning is a continuous update and continuously evolving. Mike will continue to build on the capital improvement plan itself and will have a, a more comprehensive document and presentation for the board in the fall. But I, I, I stand behind these recommendations. I think there's a lot of thought, review and just fortunate that in my six and a half years, we have never been in a position to address the amount of capital needs that we can address in F Y twenty five. Just for, for a number of reasons. You know, typically, the town has generally had above, anywhere above five to six hundred thousand available in free cash. Which doesn't go very far. We've talked about a number of these items with, short of borrowing, which you know, we don't want to do. You know, we can't accomplish these things. And, and this particular year, we have the town's in a favorable position to get a lot of these items that, that we need to do to be able to progress and move forward, accomplish. So I'm, I'm excited and highly recommend the utilization that's been recommended. I know that was a lot of information. Sorry, Mr. Chair, if want to go back through anything, but you do have the memo. I've tried to be as illustrative as possible. I know it can be tough without seeing all of the hundreds of backup documentation, but happy to answer any questions. And Mike is on as well.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll just start by saying, great presentation, very well done. No, I don't want to go back through it all. I think you did a great job of explaining it, you know, and, and as you indicated, we'll have follow-up conversation before we vote on this at the Fall Town Meeting. But I think it's pretty impressive, Kevin. You and I have talked. We're making positive strides everywhere. We have a finance, we have a fiscally responsible budget. We have a great bond rating. We're utilizing less and less free cash to balance the budget. We're putting more and more money to infrastructure. There's just so many things we're doing right. So I'm, I'm proud of this board and I'm proud of this town manager team. And I know Joe, our chairman feels the same sentiments. He and I have talked about this a lot. So I don't have anything else. I'll open up to the board, see if anyone has anything for you or Mike King at this time. Selectman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I actually think that you said it very well. Kevin, I want to thank you and your team for keeping the town financially stable. And you know, we're making a lot of progress. And I count that to not only this current board, but also to, to you and your team. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Anderson. Selectman Harrington.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So yeah, well said. Both of you, I, 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 you know, I agree. There's a lot of, I, I do have a handful of questions, which there's no reason to go through this evening. I can certainly email Kevin. Just miscellaneous odds and ends. I was reading this earlier and came up with a few things. But it's a great presentation. It's fiscally responsible. And again, I think that, you know, the team does a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Selectwoman Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Kevin, you and your team have done a excuse me, phenomenal job in keeping this town financially sound. So thank you for the work that's done. No further questions.
Yeah, and, and just as a follow-up to Selectman Harrington's, anything that you, you want further clarification, further details on you know, between either myself or Mike, we're happy to get you that. We have all the backup data and analysis and kind of where, why things are recommended for what. So any, and offer that to any, any of the board that's interested and appreciate those comments. And, and thank you to Mike. You know, he's done a great job in, in the whole, the whole team and Greg's input and working with all of our department heads as well. So thank you.
Okay, thank you all. At this time, we're going to move to tab number nine, which is a review, a review and vote to sign the warrant for the June third, twenty twenty four Annual Town Meeting. We have the copy of the warrant in our packet. And Kevin, do, do we just do the motion? Do we open it up for any conversation quickly that anyone might have or questions?
Yeah, Mr.
I do have a question, Mr. Chair.
Opening it up if the board has any specific questions on any of the articles.
Alright, so Selectman Harrington, we'll start with you.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. So a quick question. If we vote to move this forward, does it lock the number in? Or can the number be added to or deleted if, say hypothetically, you find a, for the C P C, if we, if I, if we need to change the number that they're requesting for a project?
Great question. It does not lock us in. But only for the article itself, meaning we will have a capital article, or we will have a particular article, but the details of those are not locked in until, it's actually the motion that locks, locks us in, which will all be memorialized in the report to voters, which will be released generally that Thursday before town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So to clarify, doesn't lock the number in, locks the, locks the warrant article in for a vote on a vote tonight.
That's correct.
Select, so Selectman Harrington's done. Selectman Anderson.
I reviewed it. It looks like it's standard operating procedure. No, no further comments for me.
Thank you, Selectman Anderson. Selectwoman Rouse.
Yeah, no further comment since we had gone through these in a previous meeting. And I think we answered all of our questions during that time. So no further questions right now.
Agreed with Selectwoman Rouse. I have no further questions. So at this time, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the June third, twenty twenty four Annual Town Meeting Warrant and to authorize the use of electronic signatures.
Second.
So I had a motion made by Selectman Anderson, a second by Selectwoman Rouse. Any further discussion? Being none, take a roll call vote. Selectman Anderson.
Anderson, yes.
Selectman Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Rouse.
Rouse, yes.
Yellow, yes, motion carries four zero. Okay. At this time, we're going to move to tab number ten, which is an update on the M B T A communities. And I will start by saying, in my humble opinion, I think we had a very productive joint hearing with the planning board. I think it was very good. I received a lot of positive feedback from members of the planning board individually, members of the community that once again praised this board for our, our full transparency when it comes to the M B T A communities, you know, zoning law mandate. when it comes to the MBTA communities, uh, you know, uh, zoning law, uh, mandate. So, uh, I think it was very well done. I think we brought a lot of good questions up. I think the planning board, uh, has a good understanding of where this board yo, sits and feels. Uh, they understand we have a multi-pronged approach that we're trying to, uh, im- uh, implement. And, um, I think they, uh, they understood that the public wanted them, the voters want them to re-go back and expand that search of those parcels, add additional parcels and, you know, uh, not make it, you know, not, not just stick to the two that were, were presented to us previously. Uh, so with that being said, I'd like to open it up and I do want Selectwoman Rouse to touch on this Thursday event. She's put a lot of work into this. Uh, this is a, a great opportunity in further being transparent with the twelve thousand residents of this community. One of the prongs that we talked about was that we were gonna find someone who could speak to us and educate us on the legal challenge aspect of this. You know, by no means is this, uh, you know, any kind of a, uh, uh, approval uh, by this board or the town. Um, we're presenting information for the voters to get educated on. Um, and I think that's very important to note. Uh, our job is to present all aspects of this. This is a huge piece of legislation that's going to affect this community for decades and decades. So we would not be doing our job as a board or as a town if we did not look at everything with regard to the zoning. Uh, so that being said, those are my humble opinions. I will pass it over to, I'm going to start, I'm going to go backwards. I'm going to start with Selectwoman Rouse.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Just to, um, echo some of your statements. So this is the MBTA presentation, Miss and Truce, being done by Mike Walsh, who is an attorney from Lynnfield. Um, and it's sponsored by the KPM Political Action Committee. They have been diligent in going to different towns throughout the Commonwealth, providing this presentation that gives, like Mr. Vice Chair, uh, Gallo had stated, information regarding the mandate. So as our other meetings that we had, um, starting February sixth and into March, and then most recently last week, this is a continuation of having open minds as we absorb all the information presented to us on the MBTA mandate. So residents will be well informed when they go and make their vote. Um, the meeting will be held seven PM on Thursday at the fiscal library, uh, cable eight Liz will be, um, Harkins has going to try to livestream it and hopefully that works. If not, it will be available forty eight hours afterwards. So, thank you Liz for making that effort and, um, working on that today to make it a go for Thursday evening.
It's great. Thank you.
Um, in addition to that, I just want to thank Amanda for all of her help with graphics, room reservation, scheduling, helping with logistics. She's been outstanding in, in helping this, um, meeting take place. So, thank you Amanda for your assistance too.
Thank you, Amanda.
And then just one, one, um, question to, um, Kevin, I don't know if you've heard, I've heard just earlier this morning, there were a lot of votes that took place yesterday for towns on this. Have you got an update? I, I initially heard like at eight thirty this morning, like four towns had voted no, but that was just because of not, that was just the only info that had come through, but I, I haven't gotten an update. Have you heard about any other towns?
No, not as of yet. There's usually like somewhat weekly, a, uh, kind of an update as to the status. Um, I, I have, the last one I have was just when they were happening, but I don't know the results of all of them as of yet.
Okay. Um, I just heard a floor that had said no. I think that, um, this group was in Shrewsbury and Hamilton last week. So, you know, a lot of these towns are, are moving ahead and during their votes. And I think the more informed people are, the better, um, for each of their towns. So, looking forward to Thursday night and hopefully we'll have a great attendance of residents. Um, ready to hear some information.
Thank you, Selectwoman Rouse. And yeah, please spread the word, everybody. This is important. Um, go to Selectman Harrington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, similar to yourself, I've had, uh, numerous conversations, numerous texts from people that are very concerned. Uh, they're proud of the fact that we're doing the best we can to get the, as much information to them as possible. And, um, there's clearly a lot of requests to have additional areas opened. If, if in fact it were to be moved forward or doesn't move forward, they look clearly, uh, they want to move forward with changing the zoning in multiple areas versus having a, 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 just the small selection of options we have currently. Uh, that's the feedback that I'm getting.
So a, a more, a more robust, uh, selection of parcels to choose from. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you, Selectman Harrington for that feedback. Selectman Anderson.
Good day, Mr. Vice Chair. So, a- as I make my way through my, my daily activities through town, now it does seem to be a hot topic. I think, um, we're going to have a good crowd on Thursday night and I'm looking forward to that. And, and I would agree with, with what you and, and Selectwoman Rouse and, and Selectman Harrington, um, a lot of people do want to see more options. So, um, we'll see what that brings on Thursday night. And hopefully, um, you know, there'll be more information forthcoming, um, you know, as, uh, as the weeks go on.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'll just say one other thing too, um, you know, I've heard from, from all the positive feedback we've gotten, we've also heard some negative stuff, which I'm not going to really spend a lot of time on because you know, just this, this certain people that some comments aren't even worth identifying or addressing. Um, but what I will say to any of, anyone out there that has negative comment about what we're trying to do on Thursday, show me a group of people or another opinion that you're bringing to the table. And I for one will go attend that and listen. No one, as I said, no one is at, on this board is saying that what this gentleman coming to present to us is, you know, is gospel and is what the townspeople need to, to vote on and listen to. Our job is to bring facts. The townspeople asked us and plowed us to do everything in our power to bring information. We're bringing information. Unfortunately, you have a certain small group of people that no matter what you do, they want to pick apart and they want to criticize. I asked those people to step up and instead of criticizing, do something of value. Uh, and I'm still waiting to see anything of value from that said group of people. So I'm, I'm, I'm expecting a great turnout. I'm expecting people to go and to listen and, uh, hear what these people have to say. And again, I commend this board and our town uh, for how we're approaching this very, um, you know, uh, this, this very important piece of legislation. So anyway, uh, Kevin, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to provide my small update I have, um, related to MBTA communities. If, were you through? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm through. Thank you.
Okay, um, just if I could, just, just to kind of respond to Selectman Harrington's thing. And so anybody listening, watching, we have continuously and continue to ask if you have parcels in mind, recommendation, email SB Office, the Select Board Office, SBoffice@rentham.gov. Um, we're, we'll happy to look closer at anything. One thing I just want to remind folks is, you know, the ten or so parcels that have been identified, the, the town of Rentham has a significant amount of crisp land, which is conservation recreation land. That's not, um, not feasible or allowable. Um, obviously there's over two hundred acres at the Rentham Development Center. That's state property, not allowable. There's a requirement that of the fifty acres, twenty five of them have to be contiguous. And the other parcels have to have a minimum of at least five acres. So, you know, there, there's not a, a whole lot per se to, to choose from. But I think we've, you know, we've done a pretty good job of at least identifying ten, relooking at ones that were um, removed or, you know, were to sort of dis, uh, disallowed, you know, prior to add those back in. And I just want to remind everybody, if, if there's anything that you have in mind that we haven't and you'd like us to take a further dive or deep into, um, we're happy to do that. And I, I would ask you to, to send that via email or call the office. We'll, we'll definitely will look at as well as our own staff will continue to, uh, to look and see options, things that might, you know, have been missed or, or not. But there is some pretty pretty stringent criteria requirements in order to meet what we could even look at, um, just to, just throw that out there. The only update I have, um, as chair is just, I, I've had some pretty lengthy, uh, dialogue and discussion with the town manager from the town of Middleborough. Um, the town of Middleborough, I don't know if you, you probably, last week I think it was, they had, uh, some media coverage, um, and their planning board and their select board, um, concerns with the MBTA three A community stuff. Um, and the, the piece I just want to add is through that dialogue with, um, with the town manager, he has offered to share the amicus brief, um, that they are actually paying from town funds to fund utilizing KP law. Their town council, they're going to be drafting out of their own, their own pockets and amicus brief to support the town of Milton. Um, and the ongoing, uh, litigation, um, that's there. So he has offered, as soon as that's drafted, he'll send it to me. He said, do what you want with it. It's in, information, um, and plagiarize away, uh, but, uh, certainly, uh, I will share that once they, once he shares it. Uh, but we did have good dialogue. I think, you know, I, I would say Middleborough has spent the time as well doing diligence. They obviously have reservations and a big part of that is, one, they are an MBTA community. But they have spent a lot of time over the last couple of years analyzing their existing zoning and in plan for the relocation of the existing MBTA um, station, which isn't moving very far, but it's an old former car dealership directly off of the highway, right by the McDonald's. Um, so during that, they've already done significant rezoning. They already have, uh, zoned area where they already have a multifamily, um, allowable housing and they're planning, they're, they're looking at probably putting this as an overlay on that zoning area as well as the additional housing to try to meet those requirements. But I think, um, through my conversations with him, he, he feels like they're going to at least, you know, certainly move to the legislative body for approval. And much like all of us, I think everybody is still, the unknowns of what the state will or will not do is, is really, is really troublesome and really concerning. Um, and for them in particular, they have a major water project that they have, uh, about thirteen million, um, in interest and, and the like through SRF grants, um, as well as another phased, uh, water project that they're planning down the road. And they're very concerned about anything impacting that. Um, so again, it's sort of that carrot stick as opposed to an incentive approach, um, that, you know, has them concerned. So we did have good dialogue, um, I've asked anything changes, uh, transpires within Middleborough to reach out and share and I've offered to do the same. But at the very least, he did offer once that, once that brief is drafted, do you can at least share that with us as well?
That'd be great. Yeah, I think the board would really appreciate taking a look at that. Uh, I think there'd be some fantastic information in there.
Great.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? Did I get everybody? Does anyone have anything else to say about MBTA before we move on? No? Okay. Uh, at this time, we're going to turn it back over to Kevin Sweet for the town managers' report.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. A couple of updates, um, Rentham Recreation would like to thank Eversource and Rentham resident Frank Giampa, along with forty dedicated employees for a day of giving back. Together they transformed the Jane Diameco Playground and the flagpoles areas at the Rice Recreation Complex, beautifying our community. From weeding to mulching, every effort counts in making our spaces beautiful as well as sprucing up sweat beach. Special thanks to everyone who lent a hand. Your hard work truly makes a difference. Plus huge gratitude to TJ Gianfresco from Parkers Pub and John Cox from The Gavel for supplying an unbelievable amount of food for our hardworking volunteers. Their generosity fuels our community spirit. Let's continue to make a difference together. And again, we appreciate and want to acknowledge, um, they, the, the Eversource as well as their employees through their volunteer efforts and, um, the town of Rentham is certainly a benefactor of that. Um, just a brief update, Memorial Day, we'll have a little bit more as an agenda item, um, at our meeting on the twenty first. Um, our Jerry McGovern, uh, who is our, um, it's veterans advisor, is a member of our Veterans Advisory Council as part of the Regional Advisory Council for Veterans and Joe Manning. Uh, are working closely on coordinating this, um, with the regional veteran service officer. The parade will start at ten AM on Randall Road and continue on to the common for a ceremony with speakers and the KP band. Uh, we did hear back, uh, I think it was just yesterday from, uh, Senator Rouse's office that Senator Rouse is unable to attend, uh, this year's, but, um, Representative Marcus Vaughn has confirmed and will be in attendance. Rent the Police Department swearing in ceremony is scheduled for Tuesday, May fourteenth at six PM. Amanda will be following up after this meeting with a calendar invite, uh, to follow. She just needed to confirm schedules with all of you and make sure that, um, we can make that happen. But it is confirmed and scheduled for next Tuesday, May fourteenth at six PM. Um, it will be a, uh, I know there's other evening commitments, so it's, it's not anything that'll be long. We want to recognize um, the new, uh, new graduates, uh, recent graduates in addition to the, uh, Rent the Police Force. Um, exciting news, Sweat Park bids, uh, will be live on COMBIES, the town website. Uh, public advertisement effective tomorrow, five eight. There will be advertised on COMBIES and, and the like and for three weeks will be due back on five twenty nine for twenty one days. Um, it's a extremely comprehensive, uh, development. This has been, you know, obviously the, the design is one thing, but pulling together the bid book and the bid documents is significant, uh, amount of pages that, that backs all that up between plan sets, uh, specs, prevailing wage sheets and Greg has taken on a, a big lion's share of this, working with the team at VHB. Um, and we, we, we have that out. I'm excited that that's, uh, getting pushed out and advertised and opens tomorrow. We hope to get some competitive bids. Uh, we're going to ask VHB if they have anybody that they can proactively share it with in case it gets missed. And the more the merrier. We, you know, obviously competitive bid process, um, we hope to get some interest. Um, it is a unique project, I think more so because of the, uh, the recreational courts, um, the playing courts, it's a little bit of a different animal. So some of the guys that might normally GC masonry work and, you know, lighting and things like that. The, the, it's really a specialty contractor that handles the, uh, the, the playing court. So we'll, we'll see what happens. Hopefully there's a uh, a partnership there and they can pull something together and we can get a good, uh, a good favorable project, um, to, to be able to award. So keep you posted there, but obviously anybody out there that knows anybody that's in that, um, in that wheelhouse, that line of work, um, it will be available. It'll also be available. We have a dedicated, uh, RFP and bid tab on the town website that will get updated. And all that information will be provided there as well as the mandated, uh, portion, which is the COMBIES, uh, requirement that we have to post to. Just, uh, the only other thing I had, we had a finance committee meeting last night, um, was, went well, about two hour meeting. Um, both myself and Mike King attended as well. Um, there's one new finance committee member. Um, and, you know, it pretty, uh, good, good feedback. Um, I think they, they were pleased with, uh, the budget presentation. They were pleased with the extent of the budget book and, um, you know, all, all great, uh, great feedback and good comments related to that. And we now have, uh, scheduled for two weeks from yesterday on the twentieth is the Finance Committee Public Hearing. That's the standard, uh, spelled out, um, charter requirement hearing. Um, to, and take any hearing, we'll have continued discussions on the budget. They will, they preliminary reviewed the draft warrant that, um, well, now the warrant that you, that the board has just approved. So they're fully aware of their, um, their finance committee articles and the details of those and we'll continue that discussion on the twentieth. And, um, it will probably, that probably will wrap up the finance committee with the addition of the, um, the usual post in meeting that happens before town meeting on the night of. Um, but I think we'll be in a good position and, and the finance committee will be comfortable making recommendations. Um, so that's all I have, Mr. Chair, for updates unless, uh, any, there's any other questions.
Any questions for them, from the board?
No, no questions.
Everyone's shaking their head no. So, uh, at this time, um, can we move into executive? Are we still going to do this? Move into executive session under MGL chapter thirty A? Uh, twenty one A subsection two and three, discussion of strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation. I'm going to make a motion at this time to enter into executive session under Massjaw, uh, general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty one, paragraph two, three, for discussion of strategy with respect to collective bargaining litigation matters and then to enter back into open session for adjournment only. Yep, motion, thank you, by Selectman Anderson, second by Selectwoman Rouse, uh, roll call vote. Selectman Anderson.
Anderson's yes.
Selectman Harrington.
Harrington, yes.
Selectwoman Rouse.
Rouse, yes.
Gallow, yes. Motion carries four zero, executive session. Here we come.
Thank you. If everybody could, um, that's not joining the executive session, just, uh, leave the meeting. Thank you. It looks like everyone.